Stay, May 20th, 2021, our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I call the meeting to order and I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next section is additions or changes to the agenda. Do we have any? That anybody wants to discuss or talk about? Okay, hearing none. Moving on, our next would be public comment. I'll leave this section for Donna to explain how this works.
Good evening, everyone. We have a public comment section at the beginning and the end of the meeting. If anyone wishes to be recognized, if you could just jot your name down in the chat bubble and we'll recognize you for public comment. And if there's anyone right now that would like to address the board, just chime in. It does not look like there's any guests in our meeting tonight at this point, so I don't believe there's any public comments right now.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, our next section would be our good to know. Andy, do we have anybody for a good to know?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not. Just a reminder, this was added by the selectmen. If they want me to invite some entity or somebody from town, we will do that. So I'll take any, you know, recommendations.
Again, I would still like to see someone from DEEP, preferably the Wildlife Division. As people are going out on the trails and getting out into nature, it would be good to either have a conservation officer or a biologist just kind of mention to people the do's and do nots when confronted with wildlife. You know, the actions that they should take and the actions that they shouldn't. So if we could try to set something would be great.
I'll follow up on that. I did reach out to them on your last request. And as you probably know, the state wasn't back in the office as of yet, but that's changing. So hopefully we can get some movement on that.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next section then would be appointments and resignations.
Chairman Larson, Diane Welch did contact us to say she was not available this evening.
Okay.
She definitely is interested in the position.
Okay, well, I'll let Gail talk to this individual if she would like. You're on mute.
There we go. She has all the qualifications of a person who could be active on the Commission on Aging. So I hope she will continue to serve. We need some people on that board who are qualified and are willing to work a little bit. So I think she will fit the bill.
Okay, well, did you want to do the motion?
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Diane Welch as an alternate member on the Commission on Aging for a term to run until December 2024.
Okay, hearing the motion, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And please, your name and your decision. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Webbera, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And next would be the Town Manager's Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So believe it or not, we're still busy with the last union negotiations. We hope to have that brought to you at the next meeting for approval. That's with the Parks Union. So I think we're, we're either going to have that to move forward at the next meeting or we're probably going to go to mediation. So hopefully they'll see it through. That's a gut feeling. So I was working on that as latest today. We were busy with interviews for the new Parks Director this week. That took up quite a bit of time. We have a second interview planned for next week with three top finalists. We're going to end up going back out for the Town Planner. That closed Friday. We had three applications in total. One of the more promising candidates withdrew because they accepted a position in another town. So the other two will still be eligible, but we think we need a broader pool to choose from. It's a pretty important position. So we're going back out on that. We're working with the Building Committee on the roofs. As you well know, we're also working with the library and the librarian to try to see if we can't get grants to try to offset some of those costs. So we were working on that most recently and we will continue to do that. We're closing out the end of the fiscal year. As of right now, it looks like we're going to be ending in the black, which is a good thing. The Board of Finance next meeting is a week from today. That would be May 27th. And there'll be an audit report from the auditors and Elaine will have their, her analysis of the closeout of the budget. So the Board of Suckers been invited to that to attend if they want. So just mark your calendars if you plan on attending that. We're working quite diligently with the owner at number 14 Main Street. As you'll see later in the agenda or on the agenda, there's a drainage easement for that property to tie into the town's drainage system so it can enter into the wetlands. We had a meeting with him this afternoon with the building official, Fire Marshal, myself, Town Planner and WPCA. So we're trying to work the best with him to keep the cost down so that project can keep moving forward. So that's been taking quite a bit of time. So we're working with them. Working, do, 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 do. So update on the WPCA. The parts have been ordered for the pump stations. With the COVID, there's been a little bit of delay, but that was expected. So as soon as that stuff starts to arrive, they'll give us a schedule on how the work's going to go and we'll get more updated reports. But that's where they are right now. The equipment's been ordered. And that's it. That's all I had for this week, last week.
Great. Thank you very much. That brings us to old business. Top line would be our Steering Committee on the racial justice and equity.
Yes, so John had done his report through the Board of Selectmen, him and Mark in his committee. And we had been receiving correspondence quite regularly from the Coalition on Diversity and Equity Code. And you can see the letters that they've sent. And they were hoping that the Board of Selectmen, once they got done with their report, would consider them as a quasi grassroots committee, not, maybe not formally a town-appointed committee with the minority for the public of the parties, but some form. So their, their request is in writing. Now that John's done with his report, we brought this forward. And they're looking for the Selectmen to think about how they can work with the town and be somewhat recognized. So that's totally a Board of Selectmen decision. I don't think anything has to be made tonight, but you should consider what you want to do about moving forward. We do have the Plan of Conservation Development that's going to be starting up. We also are going to hire a consultant to work with us on affordable housing proposal or plan for the town. And they would like to be, at least have a seat at the table or be able to attend. You know, they're open to the public, so they'll be able to attend, but they could submit some of their recommendations at that time. But that's totally a conversation that the Board of Selectmen should have. And I was under the impression that maybe they were going to join us tonight. I didn't look to see if anybody's on here. Amy's on.
Yep.
So I don't know if Amy wants to speak or you, Mr. Chairman, you want to recognize her. That's up to you.
No, I would be more than happy to recognize her, you know, to hear at least what they have to say. I do agree that, I'm not sure we are ready as a board to make any decisions tonight. There are a couple of areas, I was reading this over, that seem as if it may require, well, some of, some, there are certain things that the Boards or Commissions are talking about are elected. So we would not, I do not believe, have any ability to appoint or seat someone at some of the Boards. But this is where, as I said, I think we really need a little bit more discussion, communication, you know, clarification and verification, if you will. But I definitely would be very interested in hearing what they have to say.
Is it okay if I talk?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. And I'm representing the Coalition on Diversity and Equity. And as you know, that it was started about almost a year ago now. And our main purpose, we have numerous goals that we're trying to achieve this year. But a significant piece of this is community education and community getting the word out about what is actually affordable housing and what is zoning? And what is racism? What is systemic racism? How does it impact us? With the idea that with additional information, our community is going to be better served. We have been hosting community conversations. We're going to have our fourth one on June 9th. And it's going to be Equity and Diversity from a Faith Perspective. And we have members of the religious community from Hebron and beyond to come talk to us because we're not necessarily experts on this. We're looking to be experts and we would like the opportunity to be able to share our findings, our information with you, the select people, to keep you informed. There's, the Episcopal Church is looking at putting in, like researching affordable housing. I know they've been in touch with Andy and I'm thinking maybe some other people of the Select Board.
Yeah, they talked to me.
Yeah, and the idea is to keep people informed and the select people as well. Like when we're trying to bring up issues or concerns, we would just like maybe to have an opportunity to present to the Board on occasion. Maybe a couple of times a year, just to say, show you what we've been up to. And if there's any information that you all need in order to make informed decisions, we would like to be able to help bring people to the table for that. We've met with the Shared Resources Group to talk about curriculum development and maybe Equity Councils and, and that's just as it relates to education. But there's also like best practices as far as like contracts and recruiting people of diversity and creating a safe environment for all people. And not to say that's not happening now, but it's always good to get a refresher. And we would just like that opportunity to have that kind of alignment with the select people and to be able to present our findings.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Mark? You're on mute.
That sounds reasonable, Amy. So you don't perceive it as being a duplication of what John's doing and having it be an officially sanctioned committee where you have to post your meetings, have minutes, submit them to FOI. You're just trying to get to the basics and get into action and do stuff.
Exactly. We are not interested in being, we want to be nonpartisan and we want to be independent. But we would like to be able to be recognized by the select people as, and work in a partnership with the select people about some of the initiatives going forward.
That sounds good, Amy.
Thank you.
John, Peter or Gail?
Well, I can, oh, go ahead, John. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead, John.
No, 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 please.
No, John, go please.
Um. I, I don't know where to go with, actually with this. We said we were going to do a Phase Two. And on the survey, there were, the survey was actually kind of a, I mean, it was really helpful. And we asked people if they would want to be involved in Phase Two. And there were a lot of people that wanted to be involved, but a Selectman sanctioned Phase Two would deal with, if you read the survey, looked at the survey, you saw there was a deep strain of differences of opinions in the town. And I mean, not just, not just of the citizens, but if you even look at the teachers, which you'd think would be a little bit more liberal, there's a deep, there is a deep seated difference of opinion. Though I always thought that, that Phase One and Phase Two would be a way to bring people together. And like I said, I don't know where to go with that now. Even on, even on the five people that we had on this, on the committee, there was such a diverse, such a difference of opinion about things that, and passionate that, I'm not sure what, what we want to do or what we can do. But certainly what Amy's proposing about code, I mean, great. I mean, that's fine. Right. Would have hoped they'd be a little bit more involved in Phase Two of this, but that's fine.
Peter, please.
First of all, Amy, thank you for all the work that you're doing. Obviously, you invested quite a bit of energy and passion into an important topic. So thank you for what you and the other folks are doing. Yeah, and I think I'm sort of trying to figure out how do we, how do we stay focused and accomplish, you know, one or two things that are at least in alignment with what the community is trying to accomplish? How do I, how do we stay narrowly focused? Because it's such a broad, overwhelming topic in many respects. And, and so I'm interested in the information and I'm interested in how we can target sort of the steps that are needed to take, even baby steps. But you know, what are the objectives that we can set as opposed to just explore the topic? John said he's surprised by some of the comments from the survey. So how do we figure out as a board and as a town, what can we accomplish and what should we focus on? So I also agree that education, more information and, and work that the community is doing is good for us to hear. And, and I'm interested in how we can focus that energy and voice into accomplishing some things or at least staying on. And I, and I don't have the answer, but that's just what I'm thinking. But I appreciate all the work that you're doing, Amy. And I, I'm very personally interested in, in the information you can bring forward so I can be better informed in the role that I have. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Gail.
Okay. Amy, I definitely applaud you for what you are doing. Coming to Hebron was quite a change to me coming out of the inner-city neighborhood in New York. So I'm very interested in what you do. As far as topics for us or what we can do, you may end up taking the lead in that as you do your work, attract your speakers, and you probably will come up with a viable list for us to begin to target what we, how we can help.
Can, if I may speak?
Yes, please.
Okay. First, I wanted to say that it's, it's not me. Donna Jolly is my right hand. She's tireless in her efforts in moving this committee forward. So I would want to be remiss in speaking about her. I mean, she's on the call. If she wants to speak up, I'm all for it. I, Donna and I and the committee have, have talked about maybe how we would best align. And it may be that we have conversations, maybe a workshop or something along the side where maybe a strategic goal can be generated or developed on how we can achieve certain goals. And I'm not sure, I mean, that would be a conversation, but that's how we may, we've, we have our goals for the year, including like community outreach. And I'm thinking that the, Andy might have passed out our goals and objectives. But we have housing and education. And so we're, we've got a wide array of things that we're attempting to do. And we're chipping away at it. But as far as aligning with the select people, we may want to at a later date come together and do sort of like a, like a strategic kind of a plan with just one or two goals that we can be working towards and we could report on regularly.
Mr. Chairman? Dan Larson here. With that, I completely concur. I really think a workshop would probably be the, the type of scenario where we could probably get the maximum amount of benefit of the time, you know, to meet together, to discuss options, to discuss problems, issues, and how to formalize and correlate the different, you know, progress with the different reports that you've got. This was, this was a good read. As I say, I just wanted to, yeah, like you're talking with the Board of Ed. I'm not sure, yeah, these are, these are entities that are outside of our purview. You would have to go to the Board of Ed and talk to them. It's, yeah. I would like to have a far better communication with the Board of Ed, but they are their own separate entity. And, yeah, it's outside of our, of our purview. I can't say that, oh, yeah, here you go, sign the, sign the paper, where you go. I also have talked with Father or Pastor Ron. And I know he is very keen on, on working with this and, you know, with properties that he's been looking at. Yeah, so I think a lot of good could, could be gathered from this. I'm just trying to figure out, and as I say, I really think that probably some, some sort of a sit-down where we could all get together and, you know, do a roundtable discussion would probably be the best use of time. I'm not sure how anybody else wants to weigh in on that thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mark.
I'd like to expand upon what Gail said. I think it's important that Amy, you and Donna and whoever else you're united with in your efforts, that you remain independent and creative. Just because we're politicians doesn't make us authorities on anything. And it doesn't make us any better at coming up with a better plan than you could come up with. We do want to work in concert with you, but I think it should mainly be that you're providing us with your findings, with your information, with your direction, what you've learned. I think that's kind of what Gail was, was, was trying to say. And just trying to reach out and saying that, you know, go with it, just be independent. Do, come up with your findings, discover something new. Because so much has been tried before and it never comes into action. Maybe you guys can actually hit upon something that does that.
Andy, I think, wants to speak. Yes, sir.
Just in a little bit of research with the surrounding towns, Glastonbury for one is a, is a much, it's a larger council than Hebron. They had some struggles at first on how they were going to develop their, you know, their committee. So what, what ended up happening over there is they had two select people, one of them, one and R, that agreed to be like the committee. And then they have like a grassroots committee and people, like a quasi group or attendees that come and, you know, give them information, go to the meetings. But the Commission, I'm not sure if you have the interest of a D and an R on this board that wants to be a part of that. But that's just one way that our neighboring town, Glastonbury, did it. If it were to be an official committee, I'm not saying that it has to be, and it doesn't sound like they want that to be it. But we could research a couple of the other towns too and have that information for this workshop. So you have different models to look at if that's something the Board of Selectmen wants to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Gail, please.
Going back to what I said before, an official committee, I think, can end up tying the hands because we have certain things, so rules or, I guess, column rules that we have to observe. But the independence of the committee leaves them more able to come up with some other solutions, some other actions that they can take that we as a board would be constrained. So I like the idea of them being independent, as Amy was talking about, bringing us information and then we can act upon that. And I love the idea of having some sit-down workshop.
John?
Yeah, um, yeah, that sounds good to me. Glastonbury. Glastonbury had the benefit of having a Republican who was, who was a person of color, who was really driving it. And she's, and they've had, they've had struggles. They've had struggles with a lot of opposition. So I, you know, at this point, having got enough hate mail, I know that there's a lot of division in the town and it's got to be handled very delicately. I would say on my, my, my side of it, there's two parts to this. There's social justice. I think code is mainly interested in that. And then I see on the other side of it, economic development. And I think there's an opportunity there to, to have, to push diversity through economic development, especially now with COVID, especially now with how things are changing. But I don't, like I said, I, I haven't really cracked that nut. So I don't really, I'm at a loss as to where to go right now. So I say have at it. Right.
Chairman? Peter?
Peter Casper. Yeah, I think, I think the idea of putting the, I like, I like what I'm hearing. And I hear, John, there's some challenges and, and what Gail and Mark said, I think, are very good about independence. And I think the workshop with some additional research that Andy suggests would at least allow us to better understand how we can support the initiative with some of that research Andy's speaking of. And then also maybe come together as, as two groups to see how we can best support each other with that information exchange. So I would just propose we, we put a date, if Amy, you and Donna are interested, we put a, in your team, we put a workshop date out there and we, and can spend more time sort of flushing, flushing out these sort of ideas and, and rather than do it here now. But I think the workshop would be a great next step with some additional research from, from Andy and the other towns. And then put that on the calendar so we don't have to have the group wait. But that's just, that's just what I meant.
Amy or Donna, your suggestions or your thoughts?
I'm, I'm thrilled at the opportunity and Donna can work out some dates with Andy in the coming weeks. Donna, did you want to say anything? I know she's on too.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks so much for the discussion. I'm really encouraged because what I see as our skills is finding information, connecting people. I know a lot of people at the state and so we're able to tap resources in a very, you know, non-political, nonpartisan way. And I think people are very willing to talk to us because we just want to find out what resources and services are out there. And when we presented to the Shared Services Group, they really appreciated the information we were able to share because everyone's busy and has, has big jobs to do. busy and has has big jobs to do, where we can devote the time. So we want to be a support. And I love the idea of a workshop where we can sit down and figure out what are the most important goals and what can we work on together.
Perfect. I was gonna say, if your people will contact our people, we'll come up together with a date. Yes, Andy.
No, I'm just agreeing with you. We'll set that up.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next is the revised job description for the Director of Planning and Development. And there are only a few minor changes. I read through everything. I don't know, Andy, did you want to just touch base on a couple of the changes? And really, as I say, they're if you read read the paperwork, they're kind of highlighted, if you will.
Yeah, so we haven't had to really look at this in 26 years. So as every job gets position gets refilled, we take a look at it. And this, we added a couple of things that should have been underscored, so you can see what was the new language versus the old language. So it's just, it's also his job, the staff liaison to the planning and zoning commission and zoning board of appeals, then also responsible for coordinating all agencies of businesses to come before the PZC. So underneath that is also the staff liaison to the Economic Development Commission and the Open Space Land Acquisition Commission, are the additions, because that's kind of what he does now. It's going to be it's going to be hard to fill those shoes, as you heard me report in the town managers. There's a lot of communities, I don't know why, but it seems like there's been quite a bit of openings for town planners. So we didn't attract a lot of applications, and we hope that changes. I know of at least two other communities that went out two or three times. I think Tolland went out, and I think Wallingford went out three times. So we're going to keep going until we get, you know, qualified candidate to get in here. We're not picking them one at a time. We just want to have a pool. But right now, we really don't have that. So I think Mike is willing to stay on in some sort of capacity. But he's got about another month left, and he's gonna, you know, step step down. But he won't leave us high and dry. He realizes we won't have somebody in place within that month's time. So we'll work with him to, you know, keep the boat afloat. But those are the changes. I don't think there's any issues. But if you do, let us know.
No, as I say, it's it's stuff he does now, from what I could gather.
It is.
You know, the only, I'm assuming he weight lifts 25 pounds. I don't know. But, you know, myself, I'll read the motion, and we can discuss it. You know, move to the Hebron Board of Select and approve the revised job description for the Director of Planning and Development as presented. Open it up to the to the board. Do you have any discussion items, reservations, comments? Yes, Peter.
Is it the money, Andy? Why wouldn't or is it why are these jobs so hard to fill? Or is it just the skill set?
Yeah, I don't believe it's the money. I think we're we're offering, I have a salary survey, we're offering more than some around us. I don't believe it's that. It's just, as I stated, there's two or three other communities that had to go out as well, Tolland and Wallingford, three times. So it just, the pool, I think, is, you know, it's no, I don't believe it's a money issue.
Okay, thank you.
Dan Larson here. I'll just interject. A lot of, there's a lot of senior staff in a lot of our communities that, for whatever reason, all seem to be appointed at the same time. And a lot of these people are reaching retirement age. And Hebron's not alone with a lot of our, and I hate to say the word senior leadership, but a lot of them are senior people. And I don't see a big upswell of people coming to fill their shoes. And this is going to affect not only us, but I see a lot of other towns, whether it's, you know, your fire marshals, building inspectors, right down the line. Every town is having issues getting good qualified people. I don't know how else to say it. You know, so anyway, you heard enough of me. Any other comments? Hearing none, Gail? You're on mute.
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
John?
Don Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Our next is the approval of the drainage easement. Andy, you want to discuss this?
Yes. So in your packets, this is approval for the drainage easement for number 14 Main Street. I don't know if everybody's familiar, that's the old Gail house. They're trying to convert that into a commercial mixed use with residential upstairs, and possibly storefront bakery downstairs, and then possible some shops in the back, along with other apartments. So that area has been kind of piecemeal together with McCorson's project. We did the library parking lot that goes behind the American Legion. And now this gentleman bought this parcel. So there's a little bit of a, I don't want to call it a quagmire, but an area that needs to drain. And in order to have that drain properly, we're proposing to hook that into the town's drainage system that exists there presently. It shouldn't be very taxing at all. We have letters attached. And I'll read the narrative really quickly. So attached in correspondence to town planner, Michael O'Leary, and also the town engineer, Thomas Fenton, from Nathan L. Jacobson and Sons, recommending approval of the proposed drainage from the town of Hebron, or Ellen J. Properties LLC for 14 Main Street across land of the town of Hebron. The proposed easement prepared by Attorney Slater is attached. And there's a motion. So I don't know if there's any more explanation of where it is and what we're trying to do. I could try to do that.
I'll read the motion, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Move that the Hebron Board of Select would approve the drainage easement agreement from the town of Hebron to L and J Properties LLC for 14 Main Street across land of the town of Hebron, as defined on the proposed easement plan proposed for L and J Properties LLC, 14 Main Street, Hebron, Connecticut, dated April 15, 2021. And further, that Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, be authorized to sign the agreement. So open it up for any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
I'll just say, I love that house. I'm glad they're redeveloping it. It's fabulous. It's a great, great thing for Hebron.
The other thing I'll add to that, though, is it is such a shame that they found so much rot that they had to basically save the shell or save the facade, actually. But that's the downside of sometimes some of these old structures, once they start getting into it. But at least you're able to save the front.
See the library.
Yeah. Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Don?
Don Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Next would be our, is there any other, well, actually, our draft agenda for the June 3 meeting? So again, like normal, if you have anything to add or whatever, please get it in. At this time, do we, does anybody have anything that we can think of that we need to add to this?
I'll be adding, hopefully, the union contract approval.
Okay. 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 Well, again, anybody has anything? Any other new business? Hearing none. Moving on to our consent agenda. And these are items that are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And basically, we have our May 6, 2021 regular meeting, and then the tax refunds as shown on the screen.
I would, Dan, this is Gail. I would like to have, I have a couple of questions about the minutes for the meeting. I want to make sure that the minutes thoroughly include what we discussed.
Okay.
Want me to continue?
Yes, please.
All right. Under new business, the roof remediation, I thought it was too brief. This was an in-depth PowerPoint with a lot of information. But the minutes don't discuss that there was an option, for example, that there was operation, option A, B, and C, and what the costs were. And I always feel that minutes are being filed for posterity. And I felt there wasn't enough in there. I don't know what the rest of my colleagues feel, but that was my opinion.
I do not disagree at all.
I think this, Peter, I think, Gail, I didn't think of it that way. But I think you make an excellent point. Considering the scope of this and the cost to the town, I think additional context is is a good idea. I mean, are we able to capture that, I guess, with the recording, right? Were you able to sort of revisit the detail there and add some more to it?
Well, with the, like you said, the recording, you can, the video, you can go and hear and see us if you're so inclined, hear us and see us and
Okay.
capture it into the minutes. But I have this old fashioned idea that minutes should give the flavor, should convey what occurred. And I don't think this was what's in here gives the depth of this major undertaking.
Yes, Andy.
So, Gail, are you going to amend the minutes? Because the minutes were, they're in there, they're in for approval. You can amend them, and they could be changed. Or are you looking for us to go back and someone would have to?
I don't think that I could, as I have nothing prepared, amend them right now. I think we need someone, probably our board clerk, to go back and pull out the major points and edit into that, because I certainly couldn't do it now.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is that you table the minutes for tonight, and we'll go back and come up with some sort of possible amendment to bring back at your next meeting for the board to approve.
I concur.
Yep, that sounds good, Andy.
Any of the members have any issues with that approach?
Let's do it.
Don? Shake of the head?
That's great.
Okay. Peter? Okay. So it's unanimous to have the secretary go back, review that section, and try to do a more accurate representation of the actual meeting. Okay.
Yeah, we'll come up with a proposed amendment to those minutes, even if we do it in our office after looking at the tape, and give that back to the board. You guys would have to amend the minutes.
Correct.
At this point, I believe.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. So the the issue, yeah. The consent agenda then would just be the tax refunds as listed. All in favor? Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
John?
Don Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Next would be our liaison reports. Mark?
Oh, we're gonna have a senior prom this year. And we're getting ready to set up the tent and pick a site on the Lions Fairgrounds. Everybody's really excited about that. We're gonna have the graduation at Ram with no reservations. It's not going to be limited. Because of the new design, we've lost parking. So we're not really sure what we're going to do with all the cars. So I'm a little worried as the officer over there, what we're going to do. But we'll figure out how to manage the chaos. The end of the year is a little frantic, but exciting. Everybody's excited about the upcoming events and the graduation. But everybody's excited for school to be over, too. I'll tell you that, including me. I'm done, Dan.
Thank you. Gail?
The senior, the Center Commission on Aging, the the seniors are telling me that they're waiting for the center to open. They want their lunches, which has always been a great, a great social event for them. Right now, they're still on the grab and go food plan. Something that came up, they were looking to, some folks wanted to know where they could donate used medical equipment that they no longer need, but yet it's in good shape. So the director was going to be sending out a list of places that would accept it because the senior center cannot accept it. The Douglas Library, June 1, will be returning to pre pandemic hours. In person programming is going to be planned for soon. And I tell everyone, if you go on the website, you can sign up for the Douglas Library newsletter. And at this point, it not only has information about what's happening in the library, but a poem has been included in the last couple that had been written by a resident. And I don't have anything from the Hebron Board of Ed, as I was unable to attend the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sandy mentioned border finances next week. I was practicing just a couple of things, or a few things that I thought were interesting. There was three presentations from scouts, in all sort of focusing on some areas of improvement in town. I know, John, you're part of one, but there was a Girl Scout Gold Award Project. Catherine Chester presented a focusing on the open space trails and marking trails in coordination with GIS mapping. And she's looking at properties with some others on a on a committee. So she had presented that. So that was very interesting and well thought out. And and a little more work to do there, but very impressive to see the young folks present projects and and get creative and thinking about sustaining improvements to the town and the facilities. In this case, the parks. There was also a presentation from Gavin Lord, I'm pronouncing that right, he's a freshman at Ram, and he presented the concept of creating a disc golf course, frisbee, this golf course in town, using some of our space. ECF in town have them. That's one of the fastest growing sports in the United States. And it allows some more active recreation within our space. And so some more work to do there. The junior world champion actually lives in Glastonbury, a young man that lives in Glastonbury. So he thinks there's, there could be some interest of bring some people to town, bring some events to town. So more work going to be done. But he presented that as a concept. So and that's been presented in the past. So it's something that's been ongoing. So that I thought was very interesting and something to keep an eye and that's been presented in the past. So it's something that's been ongoing. So that I thought was very interesting and something to keep an eye on. And there was a whole, we had a whole, a lot of detail on sort of what he thought were next steps. And then there was another Eagle Scout presentation around adding some signage, historical signage and things, almost like the Raymond Brook Reserve, that's sort of signage in the Burnt Hill Park, for the Burnt Hill Park. Historical signage. So that's a summer project and they're moving ahead with that. So three really nice projects presented by young, young people in town about how to improve our town and enhance some of the enjoyment out of our open, open space. The, some of the camps are starting to pick up, the Running Club, Farmers Market, Summer Camp Participation. The limits have been eliminated by the state. As you know, things are starting to open up. We talked for a bit about the candidates, but Andy's covered that in his update for the, for the position. Spent some time talking about the skate park and sort of how to fix it. That's an issue that we're gonna have to deal with at some point. So repairing it the way it originally was, which probably isn't the right choice, upgrading it or maybe even another use. So cheapest fix would probably about 10 grand. I mean, I, so they talked about the skate park a little bit. So I won't get into the detail there, but something has to be done about that at some point. And then the unfortunate incident, which I think we're all aware of, of the vandals hitting the bathrooms, the day one of opening. And I don't know if Mark has any information that you could share, but I, I understand that they broke the cameras as well. So I don't know that we have any sort of leads. Typically, it's one or two kids, as we know, in the past, kind of ruin it for everybody, but unfortunately, that's an ongoing issue and a disappointment in probably a couple of other kids in our community. And then some other programs that's talked about, working with Ann Doremore. So that was the update there. And then on the open for business task force, we're, we're, we're running that down. We're gonna keep the Facebook group open because we get some good traction there. Got a lot of interest in there and some continued posts. It's really good work. Donna's done most of the heavy lifting on that. So thank you, Donna. So that will continue so we can support and communicate our businesses through that. We are gonna take a break probably the next few months. We'll see what the opening does. We may need to sort of reinvigorate some of the activities there based on what might happen next, if anything at all. But again, Facebook will continue working with AHM and supporting some of their initiatives and some of our gift cards that we haven't been able to use yet. We're gonna support Project Graduation and some raffle prizes there and try to give back to the community that way. So we will be ramping that down and kind of putting that on, on pause in contrast with sort of opening the state, opening back up. So I'll, won't be updating that anymore unless there is something that will generate a need for us to do, to be more active in that area. So that's, that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you. As at least me. I have nothing with the fire department, but I do have with Hebron Historical Properties. The fixtures are being picked up, the light fixtures for the first floor tomorrow. So there will soon be permanently installed lighting fixtures in that structure. The first floor is, is really looking gorgeous and can hardly wait until we can actually open it up to allow people to come in. They actually met with a couple of people who are offering to assist with that project. So they're getting volunteers. And then the commission themselves are also meeting and discussing, talking with business owners who are actually looking at buying a piece of property and developing it that's in the, in the Hebron Green area. So some very positive news on that front. So that's, I think, kind of sort of it. I don't think I have anything else.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just give a report, small, a short report if you don't want.
I'm sorry. Did I, I apologize. Oh my God, I'm so sorry.
I'm just, you know, short. Number of people on Conservation Committee, Planning, Open Space are walking in the open space and, and, and town lands. And so I've been joining with them on some of them and with Catherine Chester, who's, who's doing a great job. Hopefully she'll be able to give a report. She's a, as Peter said, she's a girl scout who's actually mapping all the trails. So we've been, you know, behind Gilliard Hill to that, that piece of property, which is unbelievable. I mean, the, these properties that we have are just, are, are so beautiful and so valuable. Like there's old growth. I, I couldn't believe the amount of old growth there. We went to the Horton property. I don't think that Frank Zikis, who has been on planning and development, had been there. That's a, that is a huge and wonderful property. And I just want to thank the board for buying that property. It's, it's, it's so key to the, the future of the town. It's, it's, I don't think other towns have that, you know, will have that. So it's a huge advantage for us. But there are, you know, if anybody wants to walk these properties, there are people going out every week or so. I think Ann Zikis is coordinating it. And it's a nice, 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 you know, walk. I take my dog. And it's really, you know, a way to, to see all the properties that we have.
John, if I may, how do you access the property behind Gilliard Hill School? Is that from Hardy or?
We went just behind Gilliard Hill. Yeah, we went, I don't know if you know where the toboggan run is. There's actually a trail that goes in there, I think that Parks and Rec made that goes straight in. But when we went, we didn't have GPS. So I know I got lost. Now we have GPS that, that, we have an app that actually locates where we're going. So, yeah. So, yeah, so there's a trail, an actual trail that's got bark dust and stuff that leads right into it.
Neat. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just had a question for John. And like those, those apps, like the All Trail, the Trails Apps, I mean, can you find Hebron properties on those app, on those apps? Like our open space and our trails, do you know?
The thing, so that's what, that's Catherine Chester is doing, as you know, is doing that, that, that thing that where she's mapping it all. So you, you'll be able to find the trails. David Rose, you know, is interested in these just incidental, creating incidental trails, which are pretty easy to do so that people can access them. But yeah, I think, I think they're becoming, Ann and Frank are becoming more sophisticated so that they're, we're gonna have those apps and, and, and be able to, to give them to people so that they can go out and, and, and access the.
Yeah, I was trying to find the one that I use and I found some trails in Glastonbury once and it was, it was quite beneficial. And then obviously, when I would get lost, you know, I would just go down and I'd pull the app back up and find my way to freedom. But I guess the more we can get on those, that's great because if someone just got nothing to do on a Saturday and hits the All Trails map, they're headed to Glastonbury maybe, but instead maybe four or five more pop up on Hebron and they, they explore those. So that's, that's really good stuff.
Yeah, I just want to say that, that, that 250 acres that hopefully we're gonna be buying with state aid, what a deal. I gotta, if we get, if we get the, you know, 200,000 or something from, from, and we will, obviously, from the state. That is, that is fabulous land. That is unbelievable land. I, I, you just go down Grayville Airline Trail, go down almost to the bridge, take a left, go in there. It, it is basically old growth forest and you just don't see that very many places.
And if I may, just, I know we've been on this for a bit, but it's really interesting stuff. Like when I, I have an All Trails, the All Trails App, there's 500 trails locally, I mean, within some local, when I put the zip code in and it, when you type in Hebron, yeah, it picks up Grayville Falls, Loop, it picks up Gay City. Then it gets into Blackledge and Colchester and more Gay City. So right, a real opportunity here, clearly. 500 trails, let's make it 530, you know, or whatever the number is. So yeah, really good stuff.
John, if I may, while you're out there, are you finding a lot of off-road bikers or how are the trail conditions? Because I know I was going through the state forest and there are areas that the bikers have really torn up. Are you seeing that on these trails as well or are they still in, in good condition?
I haven't seen them, you know, I, actually, the only time I've encountered bikers is over on Airline Trail in Lebanon. But no, it's pretty pristine. I, I mean, really, the issue now is, is non-intrusive ways to get in there, like low, low pack trails, like what David Rose is kind of proposing. We'll, we'll do a tremendous amount. I, oh, I was, I was, something like if, if you've been at the high school, there's a, there's that trail system that goes in the state park. Anybody been, been to that? That is a tremendous trail and it's like, takes no, no time. I mean, the, the maintenance, very low key, a Boy Scout group could do it. Mark, you've gone, gone through that, right? It's like you go from Ram into a wilderness and you're all alone. It's, it's, it's a tremendous experience, I think.
Is that the one that comes up by Hope or Pond?
No, it's a circular trail that just, you go out, there's a pond that they did a really nice job on, taking out all the garbage. I don't know how you, it's off of the, the D. D, off by the softball field. It's about a mile, mile and a half. I had, I had an incredible, an incredible experience of, of walking down that trail and having three deer just go straight by us, almost kill us, run by us, like right in front of us. It was unbelievable.
Thank you. Anyone have anyone else? Yeah, anybody have anything else? Hey, hearing none, Gail?
It is 8:01 and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Everyone looks to be in agreement. Thank you all. Have a great weekend.
You all.